All right, we'll call the July 19th meeting of the Council to order. Please rise for the pledge.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Schar?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Knippel?
Here.
All right, correction and approval, minutes from June 21st, we have a motion to adopt as written.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Was I here?
No.
You were. State.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Correspondence, do any more starters?
It was quiet, but we did get a call that I'm still researching to question how we are doing the weed killing in the parks, especially after the news from last month with Monsanto coming out and so forth. So I don't have the answer for that yet, but I'm working on it. I don't know, we may be making some modifications.
Okay. At all? Mike?
Just a few interesting conversations around the letter that showed up from the Parks and Forestry Department on people's doors. So, I don't know if you've heard about that?
Which one?
About weed eating around their trees and putting multienergy tree, around their trees, well, around the city's trees.
Take care of them.
Yeah.
I think I had this, I had a call from a gal about we've been trying to contact each other, apparently our schedules conflict, but we've gone back and forth. And then a question again on boat slips that went to the parks. Other than that, it's been pretty quiet. Nothing?
I had a few conversations which I'm kind of investigating, but nothing to report or anything.
Just a couple of questions on the dam project and, that was pretty much it.
I don't have anything else. Questions in public comment? Actually seen them, even after either? Seen one there, the Long City Manager's report. Steve?
The building condition report is in there. It's a preliminary, there's still a couple of small items that are outstanding and then we'll finalize it, but that was a report that you guys authorized to have done last year to start developing the schedule of maintenance on the facilities. So we're working on that. The check register was in there. Received an email from Vicki Romanesco on July 19th at 11:00 AM stating that even though SHPO has told us that we were next to be approved, the Section 106 document still has not been approved. The DOT is not in favor of acquiring right away after the PSNE date, which was August 1st. Seeing as we couldn't get our contracts in place, we're not going to be able to have the project start on time, which is a discussion that we had had earlier, didn't happen by July, you know, sometime by July that the August 1st deadline would occur. So we would like to move to option number two, which is to slide the dates back. The PSNE is the property acquisition date to November 2017 and then split the construction into two seasons, 2018 and 2019 for South Main Street.
How do you do that?
Yeah, how much?
Yeah.
How do they do that? It's pretty easy. You just pick a point where the construction stops for that year and then come back the next year and start over.
I see.
It's, it's more of a problem for the water sewer people because you have remobilization costs and those are all city costs.
Yeah.
So we have a 2018 construction season and a 2019 construction season, which is, which would be a problem for us, but from our overall construction process, it's pretty easy.
Now, we hired somebody to do the land acquisition, right?
We have a contractor that we would have approved, what we are waiting for is, is the 106 approval, because once the 106 approval happens, then you can start the property acquisition.
And what was the 106?
It's the historical document. SHPO is the state historical preservation organization and they had approved it and sent it on to the feds. The federal historical preservation office still hasn't signed off on it.
Is there a reason for that?
I've seen a lot of correspondence as to if there was anything that they needed or, you know, any additional issues that we could resolve for them and haven't heard anything.
So we don't know why it's held?
Pardon?
We don't know exactly why it's being held.
Not right now, no.
Okay, so somebody doesn't do their job and it ends up costing the taxpayers extra money. That's the way I look at it, very simplistically. But, you know, if somebody didn't do their job and there wasn't any reason why that document wasn't signed other than it's sitting in somebody's basket somewhere, is there any recourse that we have?
I don't know. I'll check, but we had asked previously if there, you know, if it would be to our advantage to ask our senators to check on it and, and we were told that it wouldn't help the process. So, I don't know, you know, what the issue was. Still don't know, nobody from 106 has gave us any indication what's going on, so.
So a quick question, I guess the biggest expense we'd incur two seasons would be moving equipment offsite and then bringing it back.
Mobilization costs.
So do we know, any idea, ballpark, what that adds to the project?
For the road construction project, that's mainly going to be a federal cost. For our water and sewer, on a project that size, I don't know, a lot of times we see between five and $15,000, so I'm assuming that's probably at least 10 to 20.
Yeah, because trucking equipment in isn't cheap.
See, I can, I can see where they can stop at a point on a road and, you know, say we're going to do up to this point this year, just stop and don't go any further, but how do you tie your new water into the old system to make it continue to work through that off-season?
Water is pretty easy because you just put in a couple joints and run it to the old one and put in a connection. So you may have a couple 45s and a, and a section of pipe that runs from the old to the new. The sanitary sewer is a little bit more tricky, but because the new one is going to be substantially lower than the old one, you're probably just going to do a drop at some manhole and, and work around that.
So that means they'll do the, the road at the same time that they do the sidewalks and those pieces. So that whole section of the road will be done in the one, one year to include sidewalks and everything else that we're doing on that.
Yep.
So how far, do you have, you got any idea what, what part of the road would be done? Not done?
Yeah, it would, they would start at the north end, they have to start at the north end because it ties in with the water and sewer and sewer starts here at Water Street. And they would want to finish the part running north to Madison Street and then, then they would head south from there. They also have the most difficult transition points by the fire department. So they'll want to get that knocked out right away and then they'll work south. I'm imagining that they're probably going to stop somewhere between East Lake Park Place and Milton. And then they would transition to the second year.
So then there would at least be like the sidewalks would be done to the high school?
Yes.
Anything further for Steve?
Unbelievable.
I provided some documents on your G S tonight. One of them is the Jefferson County Board Letter. That's inviting you all to a first meeting of the Jefferson County Council of Local Governments. And there's an agenda provided with that. I also provided you with a memorandum from Chief Meneszewski on the PADA Health Security donation. That should be it, unless you have any questions.
Who else? All right, Steve, now we will put on record the EDC minutes from February 8th, Joint Rock Lake Committee from May 3rd, Library Board from May 16th, Housing Authority from May 24th, and the Plan Commission from May 24th as we filed, and Council Business. Cabin operators licenses, if you don't mind, I suppose we'll run through these one at a time and read the first name.
I'm sorry, you say one at a time?
One at a time.
Okay. The first one is Charanjit Kaur.
We have a motion to grant a operator's license to Charjit.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
And call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
And the second one?
Lisa Rado.
And we have a motion to grant license to Lisa?
So moved.
I'll second. Call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Three?
Courtney Bishop.
Courtney, do we have a motion to grant a license to Courtney now?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
And the next one?
Tiffany Rice?
Do we have a motion to grant an operator's license to Tiffany? No motion? All right.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Yep.
If you don't want to do a motion to grant, there would have to be a motion to deny because there's got to be action taken one way or the other.
Okay. I will make a motion.
We make that motion to deny based on not fulfilling the requirements.
And we want the clerk to send a letter?
Yeah.
Explaining?
Explaining why.
Why?
I'll second.
Say a motion to deny in a second, call the vote, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
And the last one?
Lauren Karanza?
We have a motion to grant a license to Lauren.
So moved.
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
And now onto good news, can we, Resolution 1628, can we have that read, please?
Resolution 16 dash 28, an appreciation of public service to the City of Lake Mills financial, financial assistant, utility bookkeeper Kathleen Pullman. Whereas Kathleen Pullman has served many distinguished years with the City of Lake Mills Light and Water Utility, providing the City of Lake Mills with a high level of service and professionalism. And whereas Kathleen has been driven to providing numerous hours of positive contributions to the Lake Mills Light and Water Utility while exhibiting the highest level of loyalty and dedication to the city. And whereas Kathleen's long-term commitment, attention to financial detail, willingness and ability to respond to the needs of our citizens has contributed to the betterment of Lake Mills. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Mills does hereby recognize the dedicated public service and career accomplishments of Kathleen Pullman and extends best wishes for an enjoyable retirement.
Do we have a motion to adopt 1628?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
I don't know who got there first, but call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Come down if you want, come on down.
I'm coming down.
Yep.
On there?
I can't see it out, why don't you? You want to do it on this?
Yes, please. I need a picture of all of those.
Yeah, it's better. Last Tuesday, I, I was invisible.
Are we ready?
She is whiskey.
Perfect, thank you.
Doug's thinking about the tavern operators licenses again. He said whiskey. I said he's thinking about the licenses again.
Discussion decision on the revolving loan fund. You got anything, I don't see an actual number. No. Floor's yours.
Okay. Well, Culvers came to the EDC with an application for revolving loan funds. I had sent you information months ago that the, the state wanted our revolving loan fund money back if we didn't loan it out, so we were very happy to see we had this application. The, the EDC has recommended approval. Diane was at the meeting, at the, as EDC member.
Could you repeat that?
You, I was just mentioning that Diane was at the meeting as an EDC member.
Yep. Nice report, one of the best we've received over the years.
And this is 200,000, correct?
Yeah.
And that's kind of just a small chunk of what it costs to put that up, correct?
Right, right.
We're not funding a lot of it.
Right, this is not what these funds are meant for.
Yep, so. And EDC approved it, do we have any comments?
Very happy with the request.
Okay.
Done well.
I don't see a, a motion or anything else, what do you want, what do we need?
Just a, a decision to, to grant it or not to grant the loan.
Someone make a motion to grant the loan?
House will move.
In a second?
Second it.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
The sewer lining contract three, 2016, motion 16721, can I have that read, please?
City Council motion 16 dash seven dash two dash one, authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute agreements for Water Street sanitary sewer lining contract three dash 2016, be it moved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Section one, that contract three dash 2016 for Water Street sanitary sewer lining in the City of Lake Mills is awarded to Visu Sewer Inc. in the amount of $268,831. Section two, that the city manager and city clerk are authorized to execute said agreement in substantially the same form as approved in section one above and take such actions as necessary to implement such agreement. The City Council is hereby approve of the Water Street sanitary sewer lining contract three dash 2016, whose low bidder was Visu Sewer Inc., W230 N4855, Bector Drive, Peewalki, Wisconsin, 53072, with a bid of $268,831, and does hereby authorize the Council President to sign the motion.
You have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
And then, Steve, this was, is this under what we thought it would be? The price, a lot lower?
Pardon?
The price, how much lower is it than, than originally, I guess, passed?
It's under the engineer's estimate, which was somewhere around $280,000.
Okay. And reputable company, no issues, no problems?
Yeah, we've used Visi Sewer before, they're one of the most long-term reputable companies. They've provided all the financials and information needed to be able to perform the job, but we've used them on multiple times before. And this is consistent with the work that we're doing to tie into Main Street. We're lining the Water Street sewer to just outside here in front of the building to get it ready to connect to the Main Street sewer that will then run down that line. So it's been in there.
We got a motion in a second, correct?
Yes.
Call the vote.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Ordnance 1166, we have a motion to remove that from the table, believe?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
All right, now, 1166, actually, it's since now we're going to be third reading, can we have the whole thing read, please?
Ordnance 1166 and ordinance annexed in territory of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordering as follows. Section one, territory annex in accordance with section 66.0217, Wisconsin statutes and the attached incorporated by reference petition for direct annexation filed with the city clerk on April 27, 2016, signed by the owners and electors of the properties proposed be annexed and legal description therefore which was amended on May 11, 2016. The following territory in the town of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, is annexed to the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin. Section two, effective annexation from and after the date of this ordinance, the territory described in section one and is shown in the amended legal description of map dated May 11, 2016, shall be part of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, for any and all purposes provided by law and all persons coming or residing within such territory shall be subject to all ordinances, rules and regulations governing the City of Lake Mills. Section three, ward designation, the territory described in section one of this ordinance is hereby made a part of the first ward of the City of Lake Mills, subject to the ordinances, rules and regulations of the City of Lake Mills governing wards. Section four, severability in any provision of this ordinance is invalid or unconstitutional, such invalidity or unconstitutionality shall not affect the other provisions or applications of this ordinance that can be given effect without the invalid or unconstitutional, unconstitutional provision of application. Section five, effective date, this order shall take effect upon passage and publication as provided by law.
And a motion to adopt 1166?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Second, and then, all the numbers are right, we have, is this the one? Everything's correct now, paperwork's right?
Yes, but I would request that you make a slight amendment to the ordinance where it talks about amended on such and such a date. You would want to say and also amended on July 18, 2016. So it's clear when it's reviewed by the state that we did that.
So where do we, you want that put as like section five?
In the first.
Or section six?
Section. Section one and section two, where it says dated May 11, 2016.
Okay.
And also on July 18, 2016.
Right.
So make that motion to amend.
Do you want to say the whole thing or are you just going to make it? We're good, okay.
If we know what it is to add and July 18, 2016 after May 11, 2016 in the first section of territory annex.
And the second section.
Yep.
And the second section.
And the second section, okay, so there's a motion in a second?
Second.
And, call the vote, please.
Can I, wait, can I have a point of order? Could we just make this an edit with, under Roberts, can we just take and change, make an editorial change or does it have to be an amendment?
It has to be an amendment.
Third reading already written. Any others or, call the vote, please.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, so now do we have a motion to adopt 1166 as amended?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All right, end of vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
And ordinance 1167, it's also third reading, can we have that one read, please?
Ordnance 1167, amending Parks Board membership, the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, deserting as follows. Section one, section two dash five dash one, establishment, membership and organization of the Parks Board and Lake Mills Municipal Code is amended by adding the language as shown in bold type and deleting the language as shown with strike through. Two dash five dash one, establishment, membership and organization. A, establishment, a Parks Board is hereby established. B, membership, number one, the Parks Board shall consist of seven members who shall be residents of the City of Lake Mills. Two, six of seven members shall be appointed by the Council President to staggered three year terms commencing on May 1 in the year of appointment, and such appointments shall be subject to confirmation by the City Council. Section two, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with or contributing the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section three, this ordinance was sponsored by Council Representative Mike Foster. Section four, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and publication as provided by law.
All right, and then, Mike, anything you want to?
I don't have anything new, just with all the interest out there, I figured we would see whether or not we want to raise the limit on the Parks Board. I know we have a bunch of folks that said that that's what they really wanted to do, but I will go with the majority, obviously, once we vote on this to...
And I know, I mean, at the last meeting, I think I started, there were some, there were some problems with seven, I think we brought them up, but other than that, I got not, anybody else? Got any?
I, the only question I have, are we going to be able to get seven people?
Yeah, and that's one of the questions, that's why we brought it up, so.
And I think, I think history has shown that, that, that was why it was reduced.
It was reduced. So at this point, anyone want to make a motion on ordinance 1167? Nobody?
No, I'm fine with however we do it, I just want to make sure we talked about it.
So as the third reading, no motion, this ties right there?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Kerkovich? It's just a slight change, but I would recommend that you move item 11, recommendations for future agendas, ahead of item nine, because otherwise you wouldn't be able to talk about that.
In public, I got it.
Okay.
Yeah, recommendations?
You know, in, in light of the, the past week or two or three with all the, the police shootings, I would, I would like to see a resolution supporting our police force as well as the sheriff's deputies.
Anybody else, anything else?
We need members for that.
That's on my list. The only other thing I was going to say is that it's not really an agenda item, but we are in need of ad hoc members for our senior center or community center, whatever it is. Looking for five people yet who still want to volunteer. So, if you're interested, call the city, get ahold of anybody up here, write a letter, phone call, whatever it takes. But putting together a committee to kind of investigate what a senior center, community center would look like. So, we need help there. Anything else? All right, at this time, we need a motion to convene. We got a motion to convene into closed section pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 1985 1G, conferring with legal counsel who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to legislation in which it is or is likely to be involved.
Actually, it's litigation.
Tell what I said?
He said legislation.
Legislation. Thank you. Sorry, because that makes a difference. And a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Yeah.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Char?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, we reconvene in a couple minutes.